Hello, everybody. Six o'clock, so we're going to get started. We have tonight at Gavel, let's see. Yeah, so we'll call the order. So we have Mr. Cooper Dunn, who's at the sixth grade at Shawnee Middle School, and his parents are Justin and Jill Dunn. So we'll let Cooper take over.
I call this meeting to order? Oh, oh, that's...
Alrighty, so we will call for all.
He did that with authority.
He did a good job.
Weaver.
Here.
Flood.
Here.
Bolt.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Seeford.
Here.
We have a forum.
Alright, so we got invocation next, and we have passed her, Justin Dunn, so it's a family affair at University Baptist Church.
I'm going to pray, and you're welcome to join me. Dear God, help us. Help us who call ourselves believers to love and word and deed. Help these commissioners to serve with passion and conviction and patience. Help us as citizens to echo that patience. Help us to practice our civic duty with respect and with civility. God, help us to do what is best for the place that you've allowed us to live. It's in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. So please join me in the flag salute. Intention position, flag.
Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one is citizen participation, so just like always, you have three minutes. Come forward and sign in, as we have a young lady doing already. So let us know who you are, and three minutes, 12 minutes, any one topic. And our city attorney will be our timekeeper.
Okay, I just wanted to say good evening, and hop up here real quick tonight on behalf of the whole expo staff to express some of our excitement for the upcoming two weeks that we have. We have the first concert that the center will be hosting inside in our conference center. It's on the 22nd. Tickets start at $23, so not expensive. It's for David Nail, who's a country singer. And while you might not recognize his name very well, a lot of his music you will. There are a lot of hits, whatever she's got. And we'll have an opener for that, too. So we also have a contest that started tonight, so jump on our Facebook and try to get some of those tickets for free. Then next week, on the 28th, we have a great drive-in concert, live with Four King and Country, so a Christian concert. So you can bring your car, fill up with five, up to five people, buy a cooler pass, so you can bring in your own food, or we'll have food trucks there as well. And it's just going to be a great time for the city to come out and enjoy. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Any questions on any of the concerts?
I have one question, because I always get asked on social media when you have an event inside. Could you maybe explain to people how you are trying to maintain social distancing?
Social distancing?
Sure.
So the chairs are, we're setting up the seating in what's called Tetris seating. So they're spread out, so families and couples can still sit together, households and such. Right now, they're grouped in four. Some of the VIP tables are, and they're sold in groups of four. We have a couple of those left, not very many, but, and it's just essentially more spread out. We have a meet and greet that goes with that concert this time. That again, will be in a separate upstairs room, spread out. It's not going to be a traditional meet and greet. He's going to do some cool things. He's going to do a question and answer, and give away some free merchandise to those that are involved in it, because they're not going to do the line where they shake hands and they get real close and stuff. So, and he may do an acoustic performance up there. So the meet and greets are going to be really cool for this concert, so.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to come talk? Come on forward.
I just have two quick things tonight. Two weeks ago, when we last had a commission meeting, and I believe it was when the airport runway and taxiways got brought up to be repaved, or not repaved, sealed and all that. I'd like to really say thank you to the airport people, because that wasn't small, to be able to get it down to the number we're going to end up having to pay. That was a lot of work, and so I'd like to say thank you to them. Also, something I've noticed, and few things that, on Facebook, of course, is that a lot of people are really happy with PD, too. So the last thing I'd like to do is say thank you to Chief Mason and all of his people on Shawnee PD. I think they do a wonderful job. I think it's not always easy. They certainly probably don't get the credit they deserve. So I'd like to give both the airport and PD some congratulations and some gratitude for what they're doing for all of us.
Thank you. Who's up next? Anybody else? Alright, well, seeing none, we will move on. So we'll consider approval of the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off? Seeing none, then we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think there's one item on there that I, I want to make sure that there's no question from the commission members or the public of a conflict of interest on my behalf. And there's a Canadian Valley issue, and I retired from Canadian Valley Electric, so I'd like to pull that item, so I can abstain from that, and then vote for the rest of the consent agenda, please.
Okay, very good, thank you. Do we, anybody have a second anywhere? That polled E and everything else.
I move to approve the consent agenda, let's see.
Let's see. Alrighty. So let's call the question.
So Commissioner Rutherford made the motion, and...
That's my understanding, Commissioner Rutherford made...
And that's with that item pulled, correct?
Yes.
Yes, but E.
Alright.
Alrighty. And motion passes six, zero. Very good. So now we need to consider item two, E. So entertain a motion on that item.
I move to approve E.
Mr. Rutherford.
I'll second.
And Mr. Flood. Alrighty, very good, we'll call the question. And motion passes five, yes, and one abstention. Thank you very much. So we have presentation of animal control pet of the week. Looks like we have a dog coming to see us. Pretty big dog, actually.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Mr. Spoon with the Shawnee Animal Welfare, and this is one of our volunteers. She's, her name's Melody. This is our pet of the week, TJ. He is a Belgian Malinois. He is very well behaved. He can sit, he knows to shake. Currently, we're doing an adoption event, and we're waiving all adoption fees. And he would, he's been fixed, so he would be free. If a dog or a cat has not been fixed, they would be a $25 deposit for the spay and neuter. But all other fees have been waived currently.
Very good, he doesn't look very old.
He's actually probably about five or six.
Yeah? He's a nice-looking dog.
He's beautiful.
Yeah, very good. Thank you guys very much.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation by Rachel Milo on Blue Zones Project Certification Community Data Report. So Rachel.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank those of you who attended today's ceremonial announcement. I appreciate everyone who sat through the heat and endured that. Tonight, I stand with co-chairs of the Steering and Leadership Committee of our local Blue Zones project, Marty Lewis, who's handing out the lookbook, and Dr. Kathy Laster. Also here tonight are Blue Zones Project staff members, Taylor Shakarabee, Cory Perez, and Lindsay Goodson, and others who have volunteered time and effort over the last three and a half years. Marty, Kathy, and I would like to take about 15 minutes to share with you many of the accomplishments in the community that ultimately led to measured improvement in our well-being and enhanced community vitality that earned us the first Blue Zones Project Certified Community Designation in the state of Oklahoma. What we have given you is a picture-friendly lookbook of three and a half works, three and a half years of work, but what we're going to share with you today is really the data that has come about since the work.
Since the Avidus Foundation was formed in 2012, we made our mission to measurably improve the health, wellness, and quality of life of the people of Potawatomi County and its surrounding communities. Soon after, we sought out, and we contracted with the Blue Zone Project a three and a half year, three and a half years ago, and now we have extended that, that contract another seven years. And we did this for three compelling reasons. First, the aim of the Blue Zone Project is perfectly aligned with the mission of the Avidus Foundation. Secondly, our board is very committed to staying the course and taking the long view of truly moving the needle on our health outcomes in our area, an area that desperately needs to improve in our health for the benefit of our citizens. And then finally, the Blue Zone Project provides a well-researched, evidence-based roadmap to achieve our goals, and it's already started to have positive results even after a short three years. And we'll be sharing some, quite a bit of that with you tonight. The Blue Zone Project is about health and wellness, but it is about so much more, including the unforeseen, intangible benefits like community excitement, energy, collaboration, and a sense of pride to attract young professionals and people to our community because they believe it's a great place to live.
Many of you probably know that before I became more actively involved in the Blue Zones Project, I was a superintendent at Gordon Cooper Technology Center, which was a participating workshop, worksite organization. What we have provided for you, again, as Kathy said, is a hard copy of the lookbook of three and a half years of work. It's a look at what our community can be proud of, what our tourism department hopefully can brag about and share, and what our business owners can use to recruit and maintain talent. And what the three of us will share with you is an additional measured successes and data points. We welcome questions along the way, and at the end, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Beginning with worksites, as Marty mentioned, we're so proud to have worked closely with our county's largest employer, Citizen Potawatomi Nation. We helped four of their business units become approved by applying best practices for creating a healthier environment for their employees to work, purpose workshops for them to identify their gifts and skills, and challenges for them to showcase a variety of well-being activities. We focused the first three and a half years' work on the top 20 work sites, meaning they, if they are a top 20 work site in our county, they have more than 120 employees. The reason that focus is done at first is to create a tipping point of impact in the community's workforce. Here are a few data points from our top 20 work sites who measured and reported the improvement over the last three and a half years.
And we'll start with Gordon Cooper Technology Center. They had a 13% increase in the participation of biometric screenings, and a 20% decrease in employees with a BMI rating in the red or the obese range. One organization had a decrease in workers' compensation claims of nearly 75% from the baseline. And one organization had absenteeism costs go down from $325, $324 per employee to $257 per employee, saving that business over $67 per person. One organization also began offering health screenings, and while zero participated in 2017, 163 people participated in 2019. One organization increased their staff volunteerism by over six hours per month.
Blue Zone Project had great leadership from the faith-based organizations, from the Steering and Leadership Co-Chairs Elaine Phillips and David Henry. Two, and three approved faith-based organizations came about, Emmanuel Episcopal, Sharon Baptist, and Seventh Day Adventist. These congregations maintain community gardens that you now see throughout our city with significant and diverse community involvement. They launched annual Bike to Church Days, passed tobacco policies, included plant-based options in their potlucks, and helped support the valuable message that knowing one's purpose is a critical component of well-being. Overall, our community had 766 people attend purpose workshops.
We heard at the beginning of this project that this generation of young people, younger than us, or many of us maybe in this audience, are the first generation that will not, will not outlive their parents. And we feel threatened by that, as all of us should. But we also should feel motivated about that. If we want our community and our region to live longer, better, we have to impact the school-aged children. And I'm proud to say that the Blue Zones Project had, through school adoption, had a thorough school adoption. Not only did Shawnee Public Schools apply healthy work practices for their teachers, but it also prioritized health for the students in all seven of the Shawnee Public School sites. Both Shawnee Public Schools and Pleasant Grove Schools passed wellness policies that promoted healthy behaviors, included more movement in their days, but also prioritized health for the students in all seven sites. Horace Mann Elementary hosted a Safe Route to School Summit, with teachers, administrators, city engineering and planning staff involved, which ultimately informed the citywide safe routes to school that I'm proud to say you helped adopt as well. The focus on these safe routes drew a great deal of attention when we launched the Walking School Bus Mayoral Challenge in 2019. Former Mayor Richard Finley challenged students within the Shawnee area to collectively walk to Japan, which is the sister city of Shawnee and one of the original Blue Zones. Students from all of our elementary and middle school sites participated, and during, actually, I think it was only one semester, they walked over 7,818 miles. That's a long way.
One of the greatest visible changes in our community is, since Blue Zones Project arrived, is the atmosphere of our grocery stores and restaurants. Several very dedicated committees focused on helping our grocery stores and restaurants offer healthier options at the same or lower price than unhealthy options. Our restaurants, as you see on a billboard when you come into our city on I-40, now offer 70-plus healthy options in addition to salads. Our restaurants have taken steps to make the healthy choice easier for us consumers, such as offering bread only by request to lower our temptation to consume unnecessary excessive calories, eliminating free refills on sugar-sweetened beverages, offering half-sized portions in children's menu options, educating and training staff on the healthier menu specials. Ultimately, these choices offer consumers healthy options at the same or lower price, and restaurant owners don't sacrifice margin or business. Blue Zones Project continues to support each of these approved restaurants during COVID. We've been emailing their menus and connecting their delivery services to the work sites who are providing meals for their employees. One of the largest manufacturing sites reached out to us directly at the beginning of COVID, asking us to help coordinate meals for their 300-plus employees on site. They knew Blue Zones Project had a relationship with the restaurants, and with our, within hours, we had meals, including healthy ones, scheduled and prepared for 300 people for the next two months. This benefited both the manufacturing plant and the restaurants in a great time of need. Here are a few stats from the approved restaurants offering Blue Zones Project menu items. The Surf Bar, once it became Blue Zones Project-approved, saw sales increase 500% in one year, and have since added Blue Zones Inspired Children's Menu Items. Blue Zones Inspired Healthy Meals sales at another restaurant continue to trend upward with a 5% increase from 2019 to 2020, and they've seen the value and echoed the value of the Blue Zones Project marketing support through the COVID season. Sales of the Blue Zones Inspired Entrees at our first approved restaurant went from 40% in 2019 to 55% of their sales in 2020. And in 2018, one restaurant, who was selling 60 meals per month that were on the healthy entree list, then doubled that in what they're selling in 2019, selling 120 healthy meals per month. The restaurants have been the home to the Field Trip Friday Roadshow, and now have enjoyed the increase in online reviews as a result of our marketing and support of their restaurants.
Thanks to the dedicated volunteers in our food environment, we also have three grocery stores now offer a Healthy Choices checkout lane, which I have personally used. Fire Lake Discount Foods offers promotions on Blue Zones food, uses shelf talkers to highlight foods from the original Blue Zones, and have increased their signage identifying locally grown foods, the benefits of water, and recipes for plant-based meals. They have been instrumental in offering food to our community at affordable prices. They have seen increases in water and produce sales over, over the years since their partnership with the Blue Zone Project. Homeland, which has two employee-owned grocery stores in our community, took a significant step in improving our community well-being when they passed a policy to no longer sell tobacco products at their grocery stores in Shawnee, despite the fact that it impacted or could impact their actual profit. All three grocery stores have hosted registered dieticians to give grocery store tours, and volunteers to host cooking education demonstrations within the grocery stores.
The food environment is impacted not only by grocery stores and restaurants, but also food policy programs. Our community is so proud to have led an impactful Veggie RX pilot programming program, yielding incredible outcomes among participants, including: 94% of the participants reported that eating more fruits and vegetables made a difference in their health. 44% reported a decrease in their household's food insecurity. And 70% of the participants of the Pilot Veggie RX program lowered their blood pressure during the program. This program made such a dramatic impact in those 40 families that we've just received a $50,000 Teligen grant to launch the Veggie RX program for 2020, 2021. This is in partnership with SSM St. Anthony's Hospital, Homeland, and Fire Lake Discount Foods. Through programs like Veggie RX, community programs, and food education in Shawnee community market, the amount of produce that's been distributed to our underserved went from 3,200 pounds in 2017 to over 11,000 pounds in 2020.
With the help of many partner organizations, 51% of all Shawnee residents are aware of the Blue Zones Project, and more than 23% of the community self-reported that they are engaged in the project in 2019. Furthermore, 29% of respondents say Blue Zones Project has made a positive impact on their life. The people and the places of our community often show results more immediately than policy work does. But we're pleased to say our community has had significant policy accomplishments, again, because of this city commission, and success is in a very short three and a half years. The policy committees have had very impactful collaborative successes. They've established strong partnerships with Gateway to Prevention and Recovery, Community Renewal, the OSU Extension, TSET Healthy Living Program, Citizen Potawatomi Nation, Community Market, the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, Safe Events for Families, and you, the city of Shawnee. With the help of the Blue Zones Project hired subject experts and the focus on community engagement policy, we've brought residents together to give input on the following policies you've passed at the city of Shawnee since 2017. The Complete Streets Policy, the Safe Routes to School Master Plan, the Urban Chicken Ordinance, usually get a chuckle when you say that one, a Health Zone Ordinance, and the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. In addition to the millions of dollars that Avidus has contributed to the community in this effort, the project has attracted an additional $115,500 in grant funding for projects benefiting citizens of Shawnee, such as Safe Routes to Parks, the work done at the Lions Club Park, dozens of school and community gardens, the city's first mini-circle, and the Veggie RX program. We collectively supported the temporary half-cent sales tax that passed to fund $30 million in improvements for public safety, for streets and roads, as well as parks and public facilities. We provided research and support for the continued installation of sidewalks by assisting with the sidewalk gap analysis study. And the Blue Zones Project supports the city of Shawnee efforts with research, people, and free subject matter experts.
Yes. Okay. The Blue Zones Project located their office in a downtown building in 2017, and we saw the downtown permits around us go from four in 2016 to 22 in 2019. Downtown Shawnee has now been featured in Discover Oklahoma three times since 2017. Blue Zones Project regularly brings people downtown who've not been downtown, not been on Main Street, in years, or even decades.
The third policy area where Blue Zones Project has spent time is in tobacco. With the great partnership with the TSET Healthy Living Program, the adult smoking rate in our county has declined from 20.1% in 2017 to 19.7 in 2019. The cigarette smoking among youth ages 13 to 17 has declined from 12.5% in 2017 to 9.1% in 2018. Blue Zones Project organized a committee and championed the Health Zone Ordinance the city of Shawnee passed, prohibiting the sale and use of vape products in a large section of the city that includes the area where our high school, hospital, YMCA, and City Expo Center exist. They also provided support to Shawnee Public Schools when they decided to be the first Oklahoma district to sign on and support the class action lawsuit against Juul.
Through effective policy at the school, work site, city, and state level, we support inclusion and equality, with equal opportunity to a healthy lifestyle. Today, we shared with you hundreds of subtle changes that have happened in our community in a very short three years. Today, Share Care and Blue Zones Project announced publicly that our community has officially reached the tipping point of impact in our community. We are now a certified Blue Zones community, and we can use that label for economic development, statewide recognition, and ultimately to continue to provide a healthy environment for our children to hopefully outlive the nation's life expectancy predictions for them. You, the citizens of Shawnee and elected officials, we thank you. Today, we bragged on you to congressional officials, state representatives, and city leaders who all came here to be a part of this recognition. Blue Zones Project is something we can actually all be very proud of, and because of the work of our project and our partners like you, we will be, one day, the healthiest county in the state of Oklahoma. Thank you. Any questions?
No? Thank you guys very much. Alrighty. So let's see, number five. Consider an appointment of a city commissioner to the parks and recreations. Number five, consider an appointment of a city commissioner to the Parks and Recreation Committee. So, Chance, I think, I think you're up.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Mayor Bolt, you were serving on the Parks and Rec Committee-
Yes, sir.
-as a Commissioner of Ward One, and based on your appointment to Mayor through the previous election, you'll now be removed from that committee, and we need to appoint a Commissioner to fill that Commissioner role. I'd also like to note that Commissioner Weaver was previously serving on the committee as a citizen-
Right.
-and he has resigned, which was acknowledged in the consent agenda, so it'll be up to the Commission to appoint a new member to serve on the committee.
Right. So, I think when I first got on there, I think basically it was just, you know, whoever would raise their hand, so I'm assuming, I hate to assume, but I would guess that you'd probably want to continue.
Yes, and I think I addressed that you previously, so yeah.
So, is that something we need to, I guess we do need to take a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess we need a motion for Commissioner Weaver to assume that role?
So, you're volunteering this?
There you go, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
For the volunteer here. All right, we've got a motion and a second, so I guess we will call the question then. All right, congratulations, Mr. Weaver, you're elected.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your service on that committee, by the way.
Great committee.
All righty. Consider resolution approving the renewal of certain lease agreement with Motorola Credit Corporation. So, we have the chief. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our annual payment for Motorola. Back in 2013, we upgraded the entire system to go digital, which they call P-25, and that included new radios for fire and police and the tower up north. This payment is $320,827.62 on an annual basis, and the very good news is, this is number seven in the last payment.
All right.
So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or try.
Any questions for the chief?
So, this is your last payment. Based on the, you know, the amount of time that you've got to use this equipment, how much longer do you think it will be before it is antiquated and you need to do something different?
This is the system that everybody's on now. I mean, we still have a maintenance agreement each year that keeps our software updated, the equipment's in good shape, so yeah, this is still something we'll maintain for a while.
Other questions? Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All righty, so I guess we will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. Weaver and Mr. Flood. All righty, let's call the question. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution approving renewal of a certain lease agreement with Motorola Credit Corporation.
All righty, now we'll call the question. Motion passes six-zero. All righty. Wow, we got a long one here. All righty. Okay, you get to listen to me for a while. Consider an ordinance granting to One Gas Inc. acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successor and assigns for a period of 25 years from approval and acceptance of this ordinance to a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public ways to install, operate, and maintain a distribution system within, along, across, over, and under the public ways of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing for assignment, sale, or lease of the franchise, providing that the city may enact an ordinance charging persons transporting gas through the grantee's distribution system, a fee on the calculated value of such transported gas, providing for use and repair of the public ways, providing for regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, establishing rights and duties in the movement of alteration of pipelines, providing for indemnification of the City of Shawnee, providing for grantee's rules and regulation, providing for inspection of grantee's records, requiring grantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchise, providing for construction of this ordinance upon the invalidity of any part thereof, providing for the submission of this ordinance to an election of qualified voters of the city, providing for acceptance of this franchise by grantee in both an effective and operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, and providing for severability. Wow, we get through that. All righty. So, we're up to Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is essentially an ordinance to renew our franchise agreement with the Oklahoma Natural Gas Corporation, provides gas services to our citizens. This agreement is essentially the same agreement that will be expiring in October of 2020, except for modernization of the legal language. Our city attorney has reviewed the agreement, and you found no errors or omissions.
Correct.
And you're comfortable with the language of the ordinance itself. This ordinance will be decided on by you all tonight, and should it be acceptable, it will be moved to a vote of the registered electors in an election on January 12, 2021. The franchise rate is staying the same, and it's among the highest rate for all communities in Oklahoma. And this will be, again, in front of 25 years. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer. I would also like to note, ONG did want to be here tonight. However, corporate-wide, they have a policy to, they're not going, they're teleworking until January 4th-
Right.
...of 2021, so.
Right.
Did I understand you to say earlier that OGNI will take care of the cost of the special election as well as-
That is correct. It would be ONG.
ONG, excuse me, ONG.
Yes, they do take care of the cost of the election. There'll be a pass-through cost. We will cover the cost of the election board, and then they will reimburse the city.
Any other questions? And I know typically these are really long-term agreements-
Yes, sir.
...because that's not easy to change, so. All righty. Let's see, I guess we're up to, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make the approval.
So, Mark? Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Flood. All righty, so now it's Joe's turn to read.
Yeah. Well, if you guys didn't like it enough the first time, here we go. An ordinance granting to One Gas Inc. acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors and assigns for a period of 25 years from approval and acceptance of this ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public way to install, operate, and maintain a distribution system within, along, across, over, and under the public ways of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the transportation, distribution, and/or sale of gas to consumers and the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing for assignment, sale, or lease of the franchise, providing that the city may enact an ordinance charging persons transporting gas through grantee's distribution system, a fee on the calculated value of such transported gas, providing for use and repair of the public ways, providing for regulation of service, establishing depth of pipelines, establishing rights and duties in the movement and alteration of the pipelines, providing for the indemnification of the City of Shawnee, providing for grantee's rules and regulations, providing for inspection of the grantee's records, requiring grantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for the conditions of the franchise, providing for the construction of this ordinance upon the invalidity of any part thereof, providing for the submission of this ordinance to an election of the qualified voters of the city, providing for acceptance of this franchise by grantee, and both an effective and an operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, and providing for severability.
Good. Okay, I guess it's time to call the question. And the motion passes six-zero, so now we, let's see, you have one, the emergency. After order, so the motion passes. It's a motion for, so we're looking for a motion for emergency clause is what we're looking for?
No, there's no emergency.
There's no, no, okay, okay, so we just move on then. All righty. All right, consider a resolution calling and providing for a holding of a special election in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose of granting to One Gas Inc. and acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successor and assigns for a period of 25 years from the expiration of the existing franchise grant, a non-exclusive franchise, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, and providing for absentee ballot and defining the electorate. So, Ms. Allison, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is simply a resolution calling for the election board to call for the election on January 12, 2021, for the ordinance that you all just approved.
All righty, any discussion?
Question, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, I think you told me that we cannot piggyback a special election should we choose not to appoint a Commissioner tonight. We could not use that date as a special election and piggyback. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's a proposition-only election.
Any other discussion, questions?
So, ONG is going to promote this all on their own. The city has, it's their job to-
We'll probably piggyback off their promotion, but yes, they'll be the ones funding the cost of the election.
What would happen if it didn't pass?
Thank you. Thank you for asking that, because I wanted-
Kind of see that question mark there.
If it doesn't pass, they have a grocery receipts, a statutory grocery receipts, excuse me, franchise tax based on their grocery receipts. They would default to 2% versus 4 and 1/4, which is what this ordinance is calling for, until we renegotiate a new franchise agreement with them.
So, right now they're paying a much higher, well, double and a quarter.
Yeah, double.
Yeah, so.
So, we really want this to pass.
Absolutely.
It would seem so.
It's in the city's interest for us to partner with ONG to promote this.
Yeah, this is quite a bit higher than several cities our size across the state.
Yes. And this is the highest rate-
Yeah.
...received by any municipality.
Which is-
And there's a handful that receive 4 and 1/4.
Yeah. Any other questions? Well, seeing none, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, Mr. Weaver. All right, very good. So, a motion and a second, let's call the question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the resolution title. This one's a little shorter, so.
It is a little shorter.
A resolution calling and providing for the holding of a special election in the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, for the purpose of granting to One Gas Inc. acting by and through its Oklahoma Natural Gas Company Division and its successors and assigns for a period of 25 years from expiration of the existing franchise grant, a non-exclusive franchise, providing for said election to be conducted by the Potawatomi County Election Board, and providing for absentee ballot and defining the electorate.
All righty, now it's time to vote. And it passes six-zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, we have a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 1120 North Eliza Avenue, containing .40 acres, R1 Single Family Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District with a conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit, ADU, case number P-11-20. Applicant is Brent and Amanda Newsom, and I think I see Ms. Blaine.
Good evening. So, the applicant is here this evening, and if you have any questions that I cannot answer, we do talk about accessory dwelling units in our zoning code, and that is a way to have a diversity of housing. There are certain criteria under Section 22-297, and these criteria are as follows: The property owner must reside in either the principal structure or the ADU, which they do, this is their primary residence. Only one ADU is allowed per lot in conjunction with a single-family home. ADUs are not allowed in conjunction with duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily dwelling units. An instrument shall be recorded with the registrar's office, cabineting that the structure is being established as an accessory dwelling unit and may only be used under the conditions expressed herein. It must be located in the rear yard. The living space of the ADU cannot exceed 900 square feet. The applicant has a 900-square-foot accessory structure currently. They want to remodel 600 square feet for a dwelling space and then keep the remaining 300 square feet as storage, so that would meet that criteria under number E. The footprint of a single-story detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed 50% of the first-floor area of the principal structure. The principal structure is 1850, so the 600 would fall within the less than 50%. This is not a two-story, so it would not apply to item G. ADUs with a second story under H, again, a single-story would not apply. Item I, the ADU shall be of similar style, design, material, color, and use for the principal structure, and shall have similar architectural characteristics, including roof form and pitch to the existing principal structure. This is a building that has probably been in existence for several decades, and it is complementary of the primary structure, so that's not a staff concern. A separate driveway providing exclusive access to the ADU from a road shall not be allowed unless problematic lot-specific circumstances exist. They do have a deeper lot, it's almost half an acre, and so they would share this common drive with the primary structure, and they would also have adequate off-street parking. They have applied to use this for out-of-state family when they visit, so it would not be sublet or rent out to folks. And the last requirement is the lot should be greater than 10,000 square feet. This lot is 17,538 feet. This was heard by the Planning Commission on August 5th, and there were, there was a vote of seven, all in favor of approving this application. Staff would also recommend approval of this application. It's pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Newsom is here tonight as well if there's anything I cannot answer.
Questions?
It's currently, the purpose of it is to be for a, basically a second dwelling whenever overflow family come into the community, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, is there anything that says in the future that if he chooses to, that he can't rent it out as, like a studio apartment or something like that?
Yes, so under our current zoning code, ADUs are not allowed to be sublet, so they are just for the purpose of providing extra dwelling space for the primary owner, and so it would not, if it did come into that, then this could be revoked, and they would no longer have permission for the ADU if that became something that was happening and problematic.
Okay. Okay. Anybody got any other questions? Quiet bunch. Okay, so let's open public hearing, see if there's anyone here to speak in favor of the proposition. Anyone like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, then we'll go to anybody who'd like to speak in opposition. I guess nobody wants to talk, okay, very good. Any other discussion up here? We'll entertain a motion if none.
Also, a move that we recommend the change, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
I'll second.
And Mr. Flood. All right, thank you. Let's see, we will call on Joe now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to whip lots 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, Block 1, plain view addition to the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, from zoning classification R1 Single Family Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District with a conditionally-use permit for an accessory dwelling unit, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Shawnee accordingly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I guess we will call- Okay, so I guess we will call the question. And it passes six-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, another public hearing. In consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located on the north side of East Thirty-Ninth Street approximately eight-hundred-and-forty feet east of Harrison Avenue containing one-point-three-seven acres from A-one Rural Agricultural District to a planned unit development P U D for the purpose of a residential subdivision, case number P-twelve-dash-twenty. Applicant is Cedar Ridge Investments, and Rebecca, you're up again.
Thank you. So this is, as Ed mentioned, east of North Harrison Avenue. It's on the north side of East Thirty-Ninth Street. If you look at the staff report, we have several zonings along that area. We've got C-three that fronts Harrison. We also have a heavy industrial on the south side. We've got some rural agricultural property on the north. We have a single-family home on an A-one lot at the corner of Thirty-Ninth and Northridge. And then you'll also notice on the southeast corner, there's a R-one zoning that is Northridge Seven. So this item during pre-development met with the engineering firm and the developer, and they were very interested in doing a single-family development. We do want to be encouraging of adding rooftops to our community. We have a lot of companies that are looking at our community right now, current existing companies that are looking to expand and add jobs. Our, our hope and our goal would be that they would pick Shawnee to live in, not just to work in, when we're talking about that. Our comprehensive plan that we just adopted last October, it talks about housing quite often, and I'm going to just read verbatim a couple of items that I think will be relevant to this case. So on page twenty-two of our comprehensive plan, we have figure one-point-five, which talks about Shawnee land use composition, and we have a future use map that's in your packet. It kind of looks like colored confetti over the city limits of Shawnee. It's found on page eighty-nine of our comp plan, and this shows the future designations of what we see in area, what we envision an area developing into. Is it a mixed-use area? Is it a commercial corridor? What kind of residential is it preserved for? And in figure one-point-five, we have twenty percent of our land that's allocated for residential for future use over the next twenty years until twenty forty. Of that twenty percent, we have a hundred-and-six acres that are reserved for multifamily, so that's considered high-density, which is twelve-plus dwelling units per acre, which is hard to accomplish without going vertical, and so that would be kind of the highest-density category that we have. Our future use map does designate this thirteen-point-three-seven-acre property as high-density residential, and you might ask, why this property? Well, it's in great proximity to one of our May North-South arterials in town. A big talk right now that we have going on is public transportation and establishing a fixed drought system, so this would be close to that. I will also read you a couple other things from our comprehensive plan that talk about the comp plan being a roadmap for our community, seeing what we envision our community to look like in the next twenty years. We also have, let me see, I'll lose my spot. We also have that we have an over-majority of single-family dwellings in Shawnee, and that we are in a deficit for diversity of different housing options. So that could include condos, townhomes, apartments, mixed-use development where you have retail on bottom and housing on top. All of these things are in need. The comp plan talks about that we have different housing needs depending on which phase of life we're in, so an O B U graduate that may have fallen in love with our community but can't afford to buy their first home yet, this, you know, might be a development that they would look at for that point in their life. I would also mention that East Thirty-Ninth Street is a road that is not up to city standard, so it's an asphalt road without curb and gutter. The businesses that front North Harrison Avenue have complained about some stormwater and drainage issues from that road and development. I would, I would let you know that infrastructure improvement should be the responsibility of the developer. So this planned unit development has sixty-two proposed lots. If each household has two vehicles, that's a hundred-and-twenty-four new vehicles that are being dumped onto East Thirty-Ninth Street. East Thirty-Ninth Street is the only point of ingress egress for this development, and so this road is not adequate to handle the increased demand that we would anticipate from this development. That should not be a city responsibility. The city responsibility should be to accept a road that has been constructed to our standards and then take over maintenance. It should not be our responsibility to construct. I would also tell you that best planning practices would advise against a planned unit development being used as, as the norm versus as the exception. So a planned unit development should only be used when it's such a unique development that it cannot fit into one of our current zoning districts. I believe the goal of the developer and the firm that crafted this P U D was that they thought they would get an increased density if they did a P U D for single-family homes versus straight R-one zoning. Straight R-one zoning requires the minimum of a six-thousand-square-foot lot, and these have been broken down to an average of fifty-five-hundred square feet, and they're getting just over seven dwelling units per acre in this P U D form. The issues that staff has with P U Ds are there are items in zoning code and subregs that end up being left out of the P U D, or the language is very vague and is left to interpretation between staff, the developer, maybe the developer sells that off and it's a new developer. Usually, our city attorney gets involved to help us interpret that language, and so I would strongly discourage us ever approving a planned unit development unless it was such a unique type development that it would not fit within our standard code. I would also note that there has been some written feedback on this application. The first is a letter from Vision Bank. They, they wrote in supporting the application as presented, so the P U D with the R-two base. There's also two petitions that you'll find in your packet. One is started from someone within that three-hundred-foot radius, but also includes folks outside of that that were not on the bonded abstractors list. I'm going to go just quickly through items that they talked about that they had concerns or comments regarding. They talked about zoning designation, and they would only be supportive of a change to R-one, such as what was represented in the attachment. The proposed attachment is actually R-two and has fifty-five-hundred square-foot lots, so I do want to point that out. Number two is drainage. Anytime we have development, it's a requirement of the engineering department that drainage and detention plans and calculations be submitted, reviewed, and approved as part of that project. And what that does is it ensures that stormwater is not going to run off your property faster than it was pre-development. So it protects your neighbors from flooding, and that can be accomplished through a detention-retention pond, parking lot storage, underground, et cetera. So that is really a non-issue in this case. Number three was traffic. We talked about that. East Thirty-Ninth Street simply is not made to hold any additional traffic at this time. This was not something that has been on the city's radar. Our fiscal budget is set. This is the, the location that the developer has chosen, and it would be staff's recommendation that the cost of that improvement of infrastructure should fall on the developer. Number four, population density. An R-one designation would be populated with homeowners. Any other designation would bring in non-homeowners and increase density, leading to more domestic disturbances and crime, further reducing property values in our neighborhood. This is, this is a blanket statement and not factual. The last petition that's included in your packet is a neighborhood of single-family dwellings. Most of these folks are going to be from the Northridge Seven Edition, although it was authored by the single-family home on the A-one property on the southwest corner. Concerns that they have, they said that they have single-family homes on that road that are on three-to-six-acre lots. Northridge Seven is located less than fifty feet from the southeast corner of this particular property, and those are also single-family homes on a quarter-to-half-acre lots. They also talked about stormwater runoff and concerns. They do mention that they had spent substantial H O A money to improve their pond for their neighborhood, and they have experienced flooding issues in the past. Again, this should not make any of their drainage issues worse. All of the water should be taken care of. That is a part of this development. Safety concerns, they talk about concerns with the street being able to handle the increased traffic load. They also talk about the intersection of East Thirty-Ninth and Northridge. One gentleman that spoke at Planning Commission said that they treat that stop sign as more of a yield sign than an actual stop sign, and so they had concerns about that. They also talk about the O G N E Transmission Substation that's located to the west of this property, so on the north side of Thirty-Ninth. They talk about it being a danger to small children, adolescents, and young adults. I, I would tell you that that could be a dangerous place to end up. However, it is secured with a fence, and it also is behind gate and lock, and so it would take some real effort to, to get onto that property. So there are approximately forty signatures with the second petition, and I believe we'll have some folks here tonight. That's kind of my overview. I'm sorry it was not more brief, but I think that there's a lot of items to consider with this particular application. I would also say that we had about thirty members of our community plus several open houses to develop our comprehensive plan that was over two years in the making. I would hate this early on to see us vote for something that deviates from our comprehensive plan, because I think that sets the wrong precedent, and I think it's going to disable us to use that future use map for the decision-making of future applications, so I will note that. And, and lastly, this road has really a lack of identity. We've got ag land, highway commercial, we've got heavy industrial, we have R-one single-family. So to say that this future use designation doesn't fit, I'm not seeing a lot of identity or cohesion in this particular location in town as it is today. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have, and then I believe that applicant and his engineer are also here tonight as well.
Gentlemen, questions?
Well, I appreciate your comments about the P U D. I also do not like P U Ds. I've been involved with several, several of them, and I think in the past, the city has been burned once or twice in a P U D when the applicant was approved for one thing and then went back and added something later, later on. So I don't, I really don't like the idea of this being zoned to P U D.
So Thirty-Ninth Street, my take on it is, if you're going to have the developer repay that better-than-quarter-mile to be able to develop thirteen acres, that won't ever develop. I mean, it'd be too costly for a thirteen-acre track. So I don't see it, you know, from an apartment standpoint, ever, anybody ever building there just because of the cost of the road. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't understand that as far as making the contractor do the road. I know, I know the road is, is what it is, but the other side of that, look, look at McArthur, I mean, you know, the dish right there by Grove. We didn't make him pay the gutter. I mean, I know it's close to Brian, but still, that road's not much better than what that road is. But the P U Ds, I'm dead against that. I don't think that's a, you know, the R-one, you know, to me, wouldn't be an issue other than it doesn't fit into that comprehensive plan.
I would just clarify that the, the improvement of the road would be from Harrison just to the entrance of their development, so it wouldn't be for the full length. I think we measured, and it was about a fifth of a mile, but you're right, they're looking at two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now, I think the R O I would make more sense if you did a multifamily development versus if you did just a R-one, but, but you're right, that is going to be costly, but it should not be the responsibility of the city.
Twenty thousand dollars a acre just for the road before they put the road in there too, so I mean, it just, it blows up what, what could go there.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea why Thirty-Ninth Street and Forty-Second Street was never dedicated to the City of Shawnee?
So Thirty-Ninth Street, we do have right-of-way, and it is a public street. I don't have a lot of information as far as when it was constructed, but it does not meet city standard. However, Forty-Second Street, which is just south of Hyatt Edition and has a church on the, on the end there, they never designated any right-of-way, so that is actually private, and each, each acreage or property owner owns that portion from the center line of the road back for the width of their property. That's something that we, that had surfaced when we researched on the last plating phase of Hyatt, and that was something that, Hyatt is also a P U D, and they had said that when they developed that next phase, they would be responsible for improving Forty-Second Street. They actually had to put concrete barricades up because people were cutting through and using Forty-Second from Hyatt Edition, so they had to block that off. But the developer that originally came into agreement with that P U D, he sold the property to a different developer, and so what happened is he came back and wanted to replat half of the original lots, which all of a sudden were not adjacent to Forty-Second, so therefore we couldn't force him to improve the road at that time. And if I had a dollar to put on it, I would say that he's never going to develop those lots because feasibly, it doesn't make sense.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, as I understand it, the only thing that's going to be able to go on, on those thirteen acres is apartments, multifamily units. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't know who owns that property, but I do know the developer, the proposed developer, who I have a lot of confidence in, and I know there's a hundred-and-fifty residents in that area who are opposed and will always be opposed to apartments and multifamily units. So we'll have thirteen-point-seven acres that will sit there if we adhere to the master plan that's been developed, and I'm in favor of R-one, which is, in my opinion, reasonable, and it's not, it's not in line with what the master plan. But to me, those acres are going to sit there forever. Whoever owns it will not have the value, and the, the neighborhood is not going to allow that. I can, if we're going to respond and listen to the, to the people that live there, that will never be developed.
So I would just say that as far as, we know the road is going to have to be improved regardless of what type of development it goes. regardless of what type of development it goes in. If we have lower density, they're not going to get ROI on that versus if they have the higher density. I do think that people that are invested in the area deserve to have a voice and express their comments and concerns. However, in the plan, we've got five thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine acres that are designated in that future use map for low-density residential, which is one to four dwelling units per acre, which would be what the neighbors are in favor of. We only have a hundred and six acres that are for multifamily, and so I really feel like if we're chipping away, and I do think that we have a quality developer here that's wanting to develop, we're not saying you can't develop, we're just saying, could you consider a different piece of property?
If I might, I understand the master plan, and I'm not saying I don't like it and I don't appreciate all the work that went into it, but I don't like to be set in stone of something that doesn't seem logical to me to allow a piece of property that's going to go completely undeveloped. It will not have apartments on it, I can, I can almost be assured, because I think the commission is going to listen to the people. I would hope, I guess my other comment would be, I would hope maybe the developer, if he sees that this is not possible, if he could be allowed to work with the Planning Commission and try to achieve an R1 in opposition to your recommendation, but try to at least achieve an R1 that would allow construction of the homes in that area that would be satisfactory and would blend with the neighborhood. And that's just my, my opinion.
Commissioner Weaver, what is your stance on the road improvement?
I'm sorry?
What is your stance on the road improvement?
I would hope that would be discussed with the developer as the development moves forward, and that could be a coordination with the city. That's what negotiation is about, to try to determine what would be the best way to address the situation.
What are our options with the master plan? Do we have, does it review every so often?
Right. So it was recommended in the comprehensive plan that it be reviewed on an annual basis. It talks about certain goals and objectives that are part of that plan. One of them is providing a diversity of housing options for people in different phases of their life, and so there is a potential to amend the comprehensive plan. However, that should only be taken into consideration when it is in line with the objectives and the goals of the plan.
Which, then again, I have a little problem just in the landowners that own land that were dealing with this during this strategic planning that we did. We did a poor job connecting with the landowners to get their input on it. I mean, from a standpoint of just, did we contact them, saying we're having meetings? How did, how did you, how did you interact? Which I know you were on the tail end of this also. You know, we did not correspond with the people that own property, not just this thirteen acres, with other outlying areas on what, you know, we were doing and what was going on at the time for this strategic plan. So I know you had some meetings, but I don't think we ever went out of our way to contact people with a vested interest on what their land is going to be used for.
Of course, the comprehensive plan was citywide, so it wasn't like it was just focused on that one neighborhood.
I understand, but, but we know what five thousand acres that we're dealing with, correct? And did we as much send any kind of letters out to anybody on what was going on?
Well, I think because, and I'm not trying to answer for you, but I was involved in that, that project, and that was predates my involvement as a commissioner even. I was asked to be involved in that, and then I got elected as Ward One Commissioner. So as I remember, you know, we had a call out to just everybody in Shawnee, and there were several meetings. In fact, one of them was at the church there on Forty-Second Street, and that was the first time that I'd even driven down Forty-Second Street, and, you know, sadly, two people showed up that night. But I mean, I know they advertise that in the paper and on all kinds of social media and, you know, any way that you possibly could think to do that, but they didn't mail letters out to every address in Shawnee.
Well, let me, you know, major stakeholders, I mean, somebody with a hundred acres, you think would have been notified in some aspect.
So it is just kind of a public notice, so it was advertised in the paper, also on social media. They tried to host those meetings in different areas of town and different times of the day to be convenient to folks. But just as this public notice, the bonded abstractors list is paid for by the applicant, it would be very costly and very timely if we were to mail out notifications to every property owner in city limits or every substantial property owner in city limits.
But you guys too depended on social media. I can tell you that, I mean, because, yeah, I mean, as a business I'm involved in, as an individual, if, yeah, I don't play that game.
What about the newspaper?
The newspaper I do read.
Okay, we do, we do publish in the newspaper as well, but those would be the magnitude of our notification for those meetings.
So shame on me.
In my opinion too, something very unique happened in this rezone. Usually, we will receive three or four negative letters on any rezone saying, "We don't want this at all." But we have a petition with about seventy people on it saying they want R1 housing, and like Commissioner Weaver said, it will never develop if it's not going to be an R1. So I would just like to recommend that we deny this, and if the applicant so chooses, he can go back to the Planning Commission and meet with you and ask for, drop the PUD completely, and ask for an R1, single-family dwelling.
I think ultimately, the comprehensive plan is going to have to be changed if we're going to approve it.
Well, we think it needs to be flexible. Whether it's changed, it needs to be flexible, and that is no offense to you and your department, ma'am, at all. It's just my opinion that it's wrong to isolate a piece of property that can't be developed in town, and that's what this, that's what, that's a result of that decision of that, that zoning recommendation. So I like, I like your suggestion. I know we have the engineer here tonight, and I'd like to hear from him, his opinion, and the developer, I think, is here as well. But, you know, I think your idea, and that's kind of what I was suggesting, that maybe going back to the Planning Commission and trying to come up with a reasonable compromise that might work for everybody. Might not work, but it's worth trying.
Because our options tonight are to approve the PUD. We don't have the option to just approve the R1 by the way it was published.
No, I mean, basically, we have to, we have to vote on.
That's why I said we need to deny this, and basically, the applicant needs to start off.
Figure out something that may work.
I would say, because there's such a minimal designation for multifamily acreage, if, if the Planning Commission as well as you all as city commission feel strongly about the R1, perhaps we could look at that future use map and pick another comparable-sized location to designate as the multifamily and essentially replace, to do the low-density residential R1 here. And that could be accomplished through an amendment, an application of the comprehensive plan with an item followed by a straight R1 zoning. I would strongly encourage, if that is to happen, that a condition of approval be the responsibility of the road improvement being on the developer.
I hadn't thought about a trade-out, that's, that's a good suggestion.
That keeps, that keeps our options open for the multifamily, having plenty of room for multifamily, which Shawnee needs.
We need, definitely.
We need, we need that.
They have all kinds of houses.
Just this may not be the right area, whether it is or not, but, so we could look at that. That would, that would get us back to the comprehensive plan and make that modification, which would keep us from setting a precedent of going against that plan.
Yes, sir.
I spend a lot of money on the, on the plan, and some, sometimes it may miss, but we are, it's not going to be perfect, but we also don't want to go against that and set the precedent of going against it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing, and I know we put people in favor, so if you're in favor, come on up.
My name's Bruce Bouchon, I'm a recovering attorney-turned-teacher, so I do a lot of planning, and I do a lot of changing to my planning, and it doesn't go as it's planned. I live in the neighborhood. I was the author of the petition that requested an R1-only designation, so I don't know if you would say this is in support as much as it is in, let me back up a minute. The only way that we really, we really have a way of telling you what we feel, I mean, I'm talking about the hundred and fifty households that are, that are my neighbors, is when you request a zoning change. If you're going to make a plan, I don't care what you're going to plan. I mean, I kind of care as a citizen, but it doesn't impact me until you change that zoning. It's agricultural right now, and we love the fact that that water is being absorbed by a lot of that dirt and grass up there. So keeping it R1 is excellent for us, but if it's going to develop, we wanted it to develop as individual lots. We don't want roofs and parking lots, and that, what I understand, you try to handle the water, I understand it, but I'm, I live on the pond, and the pond is owned by the people. We bought the pond. We own it with a, with a LLC, the property that touches the pond, and we maintain it, and I'm the chief guy who handles that. And it, we spent more than twenty-five thousand dollars on improving the pond, and don't want it to flood every time, because it floods right through my front yard. If it flows down the backside of that dam, it'll erode the backside of that dam, and then the whole pond is gone. And there goes, you know, fifty thousand dollars in property value for us, each. So the concern is not in support of this particular plan, but it's a lot better than a, than a three-story apartment complex. So I pulled out the R1 designation just because that's the least dense that we have, if I'm reading it right, and because it's the least dense, if the property's going to be developed, we'd like to see it be an R1. Now, I know that that may be going against the plan, but that's why you have these hearings. That's what this is for, is for people like us to come up and say, "Well, you know, you got a plan, and I appreciate you spending my money on it too, I do." But I told you before, I've been a planner for sixteen years now, and I don't, I can't tell you a day that I've ever had that went as planned. So I can't, I don't think you can let that plan decide your zoning, because it don't, you're not complying with the notice you need to, to us as publicly impacted people, because the, I just saw that little yellow sign driving by there, and I, you know, don't pay a whole lot of attention to them, but I know how to read them, I mean, I know what they are, and it just said, "PUD, Planned Use Development." I know what that is, and I thought, well, residential, Planned Use Development, I'm not, I don't know if that's going to be R1 or what. So that's where our petition came from. We have several other people here absolutely want to say something, so I'm not going to go drone on, but my concern when I originally drafted the petition was that extra water running into my pond, okay? It's my pond, and several other people out here own it too. And I was concerned about any other zoning other than R1, because that one's going to have the most dirt and grass and stuff, so that it will keep the water out of my pond, in essence, okay? Now, there's other people, I'm sure, that want to talk about other things, whether it's density or the road or whatever, but I'll pause here, I don't have a whole lot to say, it's in the petition. If you've got any questions of me on those first two things, and then I'll... Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we saw someone else starting to come up.
My name is Larry Apple. I live directly south of this property you're talking about. I've heard a lot of talk about thirteen acres over there. Well, I own thirteen on the other side, and I can assure you that there won't be any apartments built on my thirteen. And in your plan, it has apartments, but my trust won't allow that. So you're not only going to have thirteen, you're going to have twenty-six. And the other thing I'd like to talk about is the people. I heard the number forty. My wife and I took that petition around, and Bruce and his friend Mike Sperry helped also. There were a hundred and seventy-seven signatures on that. Now, that represented about a hundred and fifty households, because when you go to the door with a petition, and the man says, "Yes, I'll sign it," and the lady says, "I want to sign it too," I'm certainly not going to say, "No, ma'am, you can't sign it on him." I've got more sense than that. So there's a hundred and seventy-seven. There is approximately two hundred and thirty-five homes in Northridge. And if you think everybody's going to open the door when you walk up there and knock, and you've got a clipboard, I'm here to tell you, they won't. I had doors slowly closed as I walked up. I had, I could hear the dog barking and the people talking, but they wouldn't come to the door. So out of all those door knockings that we did, I had two negatives against, that would not sign the petition. Now, in my engineering background, that's about ninety-nine percent, and according to poll numbers, that's pretty good numbers. So that's how many people don't want this. And, and so, gentlemen, I'm speaking for those people. I'm just one landowner. Larry David's back here, my neighbor, he owns five or six acres. Mr. Corbin, north of this project, he owns several acres, and they're adamant, they're not going to let anything happen on their property, although it's in the plan. They're all adamant, no apartments. So the other thing I'd like to talk to you about, the financial. If you go out and look at the tax records, which are public, of the properties in Northridge, those taxes on those individual houses range from about two thousand to about fifty-six hundred per unit. Now, that's a lot of money out of that many houses. An apartment complex, the day the first person moves in that complex, they start depreciating that complex, and it's depreciated for twenty-seven and a half years, about three and a half is three point six percent, if you want to be exact, the IRS. Now, that's a pretty good argument, if you own that apartment complex to get your taxes reduced, because you're sitting there with a piece of paper that says, "It's no longer worth what I built, what I paid for when I built it." But I, I can guarantee you as a homeowner, you're not going to have any success getting your property taxes reduced every year. And I'm seventy-seven years old, and I've owned homes for about fifty-some years, and every year they go up, the taxes do, but they don't do that on apartment complexes. The land goes up, but not the apartment complex. So I'd ask you to consider those when you're making your decisions on this, and I appreciate your comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? A gentleman in the back.
I'm David Connelson, I'm the developer on the addition. Now, just, I'll have to come up in case you had any questions, and maybe to make a few points that I wanted to make when I came here. One was the notice that you, you know, I understand that you, that you spent a lot of time on the comprehensive plan, but like was discussed before, that was put in the paper and maybe some social media. Not, a lot of people read the paper or the social media necessarily, at least the area that those notices might be. that those notices might be in. I never had any notice to it. The people that I bought the property off of didn't have a clue that, that this had happened to their land. When people take notice is when they get that 300-foot radius notice, that's when people take notice and before then, you don't have a clue what's going on with your property. So to say that everybody knew and everybody was aware is not true because very few people are aware of what's happening to their, if it's being taken into a comprehensive plan. And the, the other point to me is, I'm not trying to bash your comprehensive plan and I understand there's a need for it and it was, is a good thing, but it shouldn't necessarily be set in stone because people make mistakes, groups make mistakes. And the way I see it, if we're gonna adopt a comprehensive plan and stick to it, never change, never do anything different, then there's no longer a need for a planning commission, there's no longer a need for a, a, a planning office and we really don't need zoning anymore because if we're gonna stick to that plan and never change, then there's no need for all that anymore. So it's really taken, it's, it's taking the voice away from the people and letting them come here and, and say, no, we don't want that, you know? I've got all these people that do want the single-family housing, it just makes sense for me to continue on, we've got one to the south, one to the north. And anyway, then the last thing I wanna say is, just because there's been a putt, a bad putt or two, doesn't make them all bad. I did a putt on my cottages addition in the country club and from everybody I know that's had any dealings with it, it's been an overwhelming success. I've done exactly what I said I would do. Nothing else would've worked in that place except a putt and it accomplished what needed to happen. The only reason we did a putt here is we were trying to make everybody happy. We wanted to stick with R1, but the planning office said we needed multifamily or needed high density, so we thought, well, if we change it to a PUD, we can get a little bit smaller lots, that will allow us to do less than the normal 60-foot lot, get 55 or so, have more lots in there, maybe make them happy and still get our R1. That's the whole reason for the PUD. And the last thing was, I was under the impression that I could, that we could change that at this meeting if we needed to. If we needed to go to an R1, I was told that we could. That may, I guess it may not be true, but I was told that if, if everything else failed and everybody was in favor of the R1, that we could go ahead and go to that and that would be fine with me, I don't care, you know? If, if we could change it at this meeting and not have to go a whole nother month to go through the process again, that would be great, so, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any questions before I, about my development or anything? Nope? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Speaking for?
I'm speaking for, Steve Landys with Landys Engineering. Uh, yes, I've worked with David Tomlinson in the group. Don't get to say it was a brilliant thing, but I'm glad I did the PUD because I did the PUD, these people are out here and we have all the voices of the com, of the community. We had originally met to try to do like what Mr. Tomlinson said, as an R1 development. This was always intended purely as an R1-type development, but when we had our meeting with the city staff, they said they would not, in any shape, form, or fashion, recommend approval of anything but R3 based off the comprehensive plan. We realized at that point that we would have this kind of an outrage from the people that if we tried to go to that approach. So therefore, what we did, like he said, tried to accommodate both, tried to make both people happy, went a little bit tighter density, there's a certain type of a housing that you could actually look at, like a zero lot line. Um, just going back on the past, we worked with Frank Bryant, that first thing, Lily Valley, the first section of those are R1Z, which was an old zoning designation the city used to have, which was the zero lot line, which is similar to what we looked at in this putt. Little tighter density, but they've changed the zoning, the, the requirements and terminology since that date. Other than that, everything else that we're talking about, we concur with the people on. Uh, if you would like to go back and everybody is concurrent to go back to R1, thank you. That's exactly how we originally designed and intended this development to be. Other than that, the only other comment that really has been pushed pretty hard, you're correct about the road. We were concerned about the road, everybody has addressed the road and we believe it needs to have something done as well. Now, it's the same thing as you, that you had brought up on MacArthur, you know, they allowed some of the other ones just to tie into MacArthur like it is, as well as, but we see it that, well, you know, that's kinda how it was. We see at the same time, there's a potential need there, but by code, we do have to make what they refer to as half-street improvements. That is part of the requirements, which basically means from the centerline of the road for the length of the development, take out that whole side and rework and put a curb and gutter, bring it up to city street standards. That is, of course, like she, like they said, is a certain amount of money associated with it. There should be or could be ways, like you said, through negotiations or talking, where we could use that same amount of money, possibly even work with the city on some things and try to use those funds to try to improve that section of road all the way from point A to point B within a certain realm, maybe a one- or two-inch overlay, asphalt overlay down through there until the road could be improved a little better. There are ways we think we could work that. She is correct and I'll be the first to say, if you actually had to go all the way from MacArthur back to where North Ridge was or the backside of our development with a brand-new 24-foot wide curb and gutter street, that's going to cost, I think she said something and they probably looked at it from a city engineering standpoint, a quarter million dollars. Well, you just, as you said, Mr. Sehorn, you just eliminated the entire development. It's basically better to put it on the back burner and just treat it for nothing more than agricultural land from this day forward. So, I kind of appreciate y'all's comments on some of that because I think there's ways we can do it, accommodate the needs and the desires of the people and yet still get that kind of development and kind of try to improve the road as it can be done, as it can be taken care of as we develop these homes. One of the other things the property owner brought up is by putting these single-family houses here, that increases tax revenues and monies, which actually does allow things to be ear-tagged for this area to upgrade the roads in, in time, which I think is a bigger improvement and something that can be worked together on. Other than that, come at some of the ideas with the putt that we'd put in, we've heard, of course, with some of these ideas that the city has about wanting bicycle trails, sidewalks and things like that, those were some of the other aspects of that putt that we tried to integrate in this development to really accommodate the interests and the needs of the people. Those can, a lot of times, if it doesn't fit just pure R1 zoning, those have to be done with putts or other kind of devices to integrate that requirement into the development, which is what Mr. Tomlinson had looked at because he's trying to create a community-type of environment. Uh, other than that, when you kind of look at the development, we, there is a small pond on the property, we're building a large pond and a community lot that will actually be, I'd love the idea of going back to the neighborhood pools and things where you create the community and I think he's, his objective is to try to build that kind of an environment, whether it's under standard density with an R1 or a little bit higher density with this putt approach, uh, it's really from our standpoint irrelevant, uh, but we'd just soon keep an R1 approach if that's the desire of the people. Other than that, I guess I could be happy to answer any questions you might have, but we put a little time into this and I know Mr. Tomlinson's put some time and thought into this as well.
I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bouchon mentioned drainage.
Yes, sir.
What's the issue of, I, I drove by the land, but I don't know enough to know about drainage. Um, how are you dealing with the drainage and does that address his concern?
Actually, we're improving the drainage here. What it is, the, the property as we're looking at is basically along the ridge at 39th Street and it runs to the north. It does tie into that improved channel at Vision Bank that's been done, that comes to 42nd Street. We will be required to tie in, put a new drainage box across there. There's a strip that comes in right off what would be, well, we own a part of 42nd Street right-of-way, up to the back where it widens out. That area will be opened up as a new pond and holding area and detention area for everybody. We have actually tried to get with AutoMax and talk about theirs. In the past, I've worked on AutoMax's property, did the last little design on that and the problem is there's a little swampier in the very back end. I think we can integrate that into this pond, pull the water off that area and actually integrate that into our pond, it'll actually improve all those properties, even the commercial properties up on the frontage. Other than that, I think we're collecting most of or all of the water right through there and really be improving that whole drainage pattern from there all the way down through the Vision property until it, you know, discharges ties into Tributary Two to Rock Creek.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? A gentleman here. Yes, sir. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so I'll bet you're up if you wanna speak in opposition.
Wanted to make sure I understand where that is. I would speak in opposition to this. I mean, R1 maybe, but there's an electrical substation that sits right there. The guy on the south side of the road, I believe it's A1 fence, he has a gravel drive-in, so if they're gonna fix up the north side of the road, all the water's gonna go into his land 'cause it's relatively flat right there and then it goes down towards Harrison because we are talking about, I believe, behind Ben's pig stand and the mattress place. So, if we're gonna, I definitely don't think apartments are a good idea and 39th Street, I mean, I remember when North Ridge Seven didn't even exist, um, there was just nothing back there but a big tree stump. North Ridge Street itself, where it comes off of MacArthur and then ties into 39th Street, is a straightaway, so you put too much traffic in there and you just made a drag strip. It's coming from somebody that's lived here my whole life, I've done it on roads myself. We found a straightaway and we hauled butt down it. So now you're gonna run the risk of people in North Ridge having that problem, there's kids that play in that road. 39th Street isn't really that big, I mean, it's relatively short, but I just, I would be against this, being in North Ridge myself, um, I never saw the petition. It's not saying they didn't come by, maybe we weren't there, but I never saw the petition for it. I would be against this completely. Maybe on the R1 to see a final thing for just homes, but not for, not for apartments. Uh, if you go down to the other end of 39th Street, right across Harrison, I believe that's commercial right now, but it's something like 110 acres. Uh, it'd be just south of, oh, Hairy Bears, for those of us that have been here. Um, I can't think of which Mexican restaurant is there at the moment. Um, I mean, there's 110 acres if you wanna build apartments right there, they could be switched around and they've got plenty of room, they've got drainage, they've got everything. I just don't think this is a good idea.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak in opposition? Okay, see, none. I'm sorry.
I just wanna add one point of something that's been brought up a couple of times and that is property taxes and the city of Shawnee does not receive ad valorem and this would be in the Shawnee Public School District, so it would go to them, but I just want for that clarification that we do not receive any property taxes.
Right, thank you so much. So we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Good question. Um, ca, what can we do tonight? Can we change it to R1 or can we not? All we can do is vote yes or no.
Up or down on this.
Okay, okay, and then the recommendation would be for them to just go back to planning and rework it, okay?
And Commissioner, I think it's probably important to point out that the reason for that is because of the notices, which have been a topic tonight, said PUD and not R1.
So basically, we just voted up or down on this and then if they choose to go back to planning, I mean, they, they have the ability to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can I say something? Uh, you noticed it was for a putt and the putt can have a requirement of R1 and your notice is still okay, legally, right?
Well, it would, it would actually be seeking approval tonight of the putt as authored, which would be, which has a condensed lot structure. I mean, I'll let Rebecca speak more to that, but yes, that's not inaccurate, but neither is the prior statement because it would not be a traditional R1, it would be a PUD.
Would this require a re-notification and everything or just purely bringing it back up here next month as an R1 development?
It would require notification because the 300-foot list is about to be generated again in order to give R1, a straight R1 rezone notification to those individuals.
And would we need to add an amendment to the agenda prior to this rezone being considered?
At that point, could we do as a putt, remain the putt, but purely as an R1 putt, as the entire guidelines, as that, because it just delays it for 60 days.
I, I agree that it would delay it for 60 days and that's certainly not the intention from a staff standpoint, but from a checking the boxes from a legal notice standpoint, I don't think it would be appropriate to do that. I think that sets us all up for problems in the future, whether it was approved or not.
Okay, any other discussion up here? Gentlemen? Good, Benny? Okay, very good. Uh, all right, so Joe, you're up and you got a lot to read.
Was there, was there a motion?
Oh, no, 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 you know, we better, so what's, what's the motion? It's pleasure. I'm sorry?
I said, I presume somebody needs to make a motion to-
Yes, sir.
-staff the mile?
To-
Except planning.
Except planning.
Planings, I, I, I mean, I move to do that.
Okay, so, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So, we're, we're voting, we're to approve the recommendation for planning-
To deny.
-which would be a yes vote to deny.
Yes, sir.
To deny the putt request.
Okay, all right. I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a motion, a second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm not going to read the ordinance title based upon the motion that was made and I appreciate Commissioner Weaver's clarification, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit it one more time just to make sure we're on the same page because the motion was to accept the planning commission's denial of the PUD, in which case there's no need to read this ordinance title, which changes the classification.
Okay.
So I think it would be appropriate if there's no further discussion to call that question.
Okay, let's call the question then. Buddy? Uh, Mr. Weaver.
Did I, did an hour?
I'm thinking, gotcha. There we go, okay, motion passes six, zero. Okay, thank you. Uh, number 11, tonight for public hearings. Public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located on 1018 West Benedict Street containing .019 acres from C1, Neighborhood Commercial District to C3 Highway Commercial District, case number P13-20, applicant Ken Stafford deferred by planning commission to the September 2nd, 2020 meeting, so, we're up again.
Yes, the, the applicant had requested a deferment until the next planning commission meeting and I was approached prior to that meeting starting, so I would ask that you guys also be okay with that and it would come back to you on September 8th.
Okay, very good. So we need to, to vote to defer then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so entertain a motion to defer.
I'll make a motion.
So, Mr. Flood?
I'll second.
And Mr. Sehorn. All righty, let's call the question. We don't need to read it, do we, Joe, since we're deferring? So let's call the question.
Excuse me, is this a motion to defer to a future meeting or just specifically the September 8th meeting?
The 20-
Well, understood that.
The 8th, September 8th.
Is what I understood from Rebecca.
I was making a motion to defer to the next available meeting, which would be the 8th.
Okay, so September 8th, everybody?
We were reading your minds.
There we go.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll call the question, thank you. Motion passes six, zero. Let's see, well, you can acknowledge the monthly sales tax and budget reports, I bet Ashley is up.
Good evening, I have good news. So, sales tax in August came in 25.91 percent above projected budget and currently year to date, we are sitting at 26.56 percent above projected budget. Now, use tax did come in a little low this month, we are 8.7 percent below projected budget, but we are still up 4.61 percent for the year to date and the decrease in use tax is more than made up by the increase in sales tax. Budget-wise, we are doing perfectly fine, uh, we're sitting about between 90 and 95 percent for both SMA and the general fund. We have not had any really unexpected things occur in July, so all, all in all, we're doing well, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wow. Any questions?
Is there anything to attribute the use tax, use going down as far as why that, what might be happening?
If I had to guess, it's 'cause people are leaving their houses. That, that would be my guess, is since most of that comes from internet sales and we're seeing such an increase in sales tax, my guess would people are getting out more and that they are shopping less online. that they are shopping less online.
Any other questions? Oh, that's awesome. Do it again next month.
Well, we'll hope.
All righty. Thank you, ma'am. New business.
No new business.
No new business. Commissioner comments. I think we're starting down with Mr. Weaver this time.
I don't have anything.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Mr. Flood.
I appreciate the amazing, um, effort that is put into by your staff and, and the people that you work with, and how, how intentionally you are in bringing all of this stuff to us, but I also appreciate your ability to, to be flexible with questions and things from the, uh, community, when people disagree with, with things that, that may or may not be stated. So thank you for, for continuing to serve us and our community well.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Nice to have participation still. Um, a lot of citizens out for and against, and then some just here observing and, and speaking, so hopefully, this trend continues. Um, hopefully, if, if these two-to-three-hour trends continue, we need to look at takeout or something, or a break in the middle.
Yeah.
So, but it is, it's, it's good to have the participation, and thank you for Planning Department, and, uh, good for our financial reports. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm up for you about the financial report. You know, that was a big concern a few months ago when this started, so it's, it's really good news. Uh, Planning does an exceptional job. I hate to beat her up a little bit on some of the stuff that, you know, hits a little closer to home, but, uh, you know, there's gray areas on that, and, you know, it's, it's a balancing act on what's fair and what's not fair, and what's, you know, good for the community, and what we need, so, you know, I, I wouldn't want your job just because you can't make everybody happy.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, you know, that, that amount of acreage is going to be hard to develop the way it is. I don't know, you know, that, that's, you know, with everything surrounding that area, it's, it's going to be an uphill battle. That may sit back in for 25 years. You just, uh, you know, that small of an amount is really going to be hard to develop as, as it is, as you know. And an apartment complex probably would make more sense, because they're going to put, you know, hundreds of houses in there, uh, so, but, you know, from a homeowner in that area, you know, you'd hate to see it just because they're worried about their property value. So, anyway, I don't, I don't know what the right thing is, but we'll have to figure it out, it sounds like. Yeah, I think I've said nothing.
Ah. Well, um, I'm gonna echo some of the comments that were made up here tonight. I really appreciate lots of people coming out. I really like seeing that. I love all the discussion. Um, Rebecca, I appreciate all the, the hard work. I mean, you have a very, very hard job to do, and I think you do it very, very well, and we, we appreciate, appreciate all your, all your hard work. Thank you so much for all your hard work and, and all the good news you've been bringing to us, and like I say, we're going to hold you to that and make you do that every, every month.
Heard you been easy.
Let me tell you, really, I bet it's not. I don't think I'd want their job at all.
No.
But, um, but I, I appreciate all the folks out tonight. It's good to see a full room. I really like that, and I love all the participation that we've had, so, um, thank you very much. With that, we are recessed to, uh, let's see, we're in the, which one are we going to first?
Airport.
I'm sorry, the Airport Authority. So Airport Authority. There we are. All righty, so, uh, let's consider the consent agenda. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? A motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Rutherford.
I'll second.
All righty, Mr. Flood. All righty, let's call the, call the question there. Passes six, zero. Thank you very much. New business.
New business, Mayor.
And we stand adjourned, and we go to the municipal authority. So again, consent agenda. It's like there's nothing to remove, so we need, we need, um, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weaver.
Second.
I think it was Mr. Rutherford. And we'll call the question. There we go. Motion passes six, zero. Any new business?
No new business.
Thank you, sir. So we stand adjourned, and I believe we are going into, I need to consider an executive session to discuss annual evaluation of city manager pursuant to 25 OS 307B1, discussing the, pardon me, employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. So we're looking for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Mr. Weaver and Mr. Flood. And we will call the question. Guess I better vote. Votes six, zero in favor. So with that, we will go down the hall, and we will be back shortly. Okay, so we reconvene from executive session. Okay, item 16. Consider matters discussed in executive session regarding discussions of annual evaluation of city manager pursuant to 25 OS 307B1, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of any individual salaried public officer or employee. Do we need a motion? We have a motion.
I move to give this city manager pay increase at 2.5% effective his one-year anniversary date.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, so we will call the question then. Okay, motion passes five to one. All righty. Uh, item 17. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to appoint a city commissioner to the Ward 1 position to fill open position left by the appointment of Ed Bolt as mayor to complete the remainder of the term expiring 2022, that was deferred from the August 3rd, uh, 2020 city commission meeting. So Chance, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any, uh, a staff report for this.
Okay.
We just, we just-
Yep. Okay, very good. So now it's time for a discussion. I had you listed on here, so I thought, yeah. Oh, well, that was a quick report.
If it's appropriate for a motion, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right.
I make a motion that we appoint Rex Henin as the city commissioner.
Okay, we have a motion. Appears, a second. It appears we do not have a second, so motion would fail for lack of a second.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Matthews.
Daniel Matthews. Okay, we have a motion.
The motion, is the motion to include the rest of, to complete the remainder of term expiring 2022? Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Second by, okay, Mr. Flood and Mr. Rutherford. Okay, so then we will call the question.
I'm still thinking.
That's okay. Take your time. I just want to make sure you hadn't hit it and it didn't, didn't go, because we've all done that.
Sometimes we hit them early.
Yeah. So we've all voted. Motion passes six, zero. Congratulations, Daniel. All righty. Number 18. Swearing in of Ward 1 Commissioner. So guess what? We actually get to do that tonight.
Well, that's fast.
How about that? So I guess, uh, you gonna be doing that?
Sure.
Absolutely. I guess come on up.
I, Daniel Matthews. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support, obey, and defend- That I will support, obey, and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. And that I will not- And I will not- knowingly receive directly or indirectly- knowingly receive directly or indirectly. Any money or other valuable thing- Any money or any other valuable thing. For the performance or non-performance- For the performance or non-performance. Of any act or duty- Of any act or duty. Pertaining to my office- Pertaining to my office. Other than the compensation allowed by law- Other than the compensation allowed by law. I further swear that I will- I further swear that I will. Faithfully discharge my duties as- Faithfully discharge my duties as- Shawnee City Commissioner. Shawnee City Commissioner.